City Council Chambers for the City Hall Building, one hundred South Monroe Street, Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Texas. We will begin with the establishment of quorum. We do have a quorum right now with Mayor Pro Tem Davis, Councilwoman, uh, well, Councilwoman Cruz should be coming, but she's not here as of right now. We have Councilman Garcia, Councilman Diaz, and myself, Mayor Salinas. We do have a quorum. Moment of reverence. We do have a unfortunate, very unfortunate news that somebody from the community, Mr. Jesús Márquez, an employee of the Eagle Pass Water Works, passed away. So out of respect for, for his family, if we could please, to please have a moment of silence, we would appreciate it. Mr. Perez was a, worked with Eagle Pass Water Works for many years, gave a lot of good years of service to the community. He leaves behind a wife and two children, so our condolences to his family. We do have Councilwoman Cruz also. Moving on to citizens' communication and recognitions. As always, people have a right to communicate for three minutes. We never mean to cut people off, but just to make this meeting efficient, we will let you know whenever the three minutes are up. We will begin with Ms. Karime D. Flores. It is five thirty-five.
Do I just?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Karime Flores, and I am a concerned, passionate, community member and member of the Eagle Pass Border Coalition. I'm beyond honored to be here speaking in front of you all again. I'm here to speak about Agenda Item Nineteen. As you go into negotiations with the Texas State Department of Public Safety, I urge you to consider that Governor Abbott and the state of Texas do not have the best interests of our community in mind. Stop allowing the Texas State Government to use our taxpayer money for fear mongering and to make Eagle Pass a political prop. Operation Lone Star is taking from our community. Eagle Pass has a low level of retention when it comes to young people. Young adults who graduated from our local high schools and go on to college and have careers do not come back to Eagle Pass. This is due to the lack of opportunities, lack of higher education, lack of comprehensive healthcare, and lack of recreational spaces and opportunities. The money being used for Operation Lone Star could be used to invest in more kayaking competitions like the ones previously organized by Mr. Jesse Fuentes, more investing in our Arts and Culture Center to replicate the centers in Pilar das Negras where students are offered free fine arts lessons, or in a community garden that could supply experience and resources to our community. This money could expand our healthcare system or in, or in a university system here in Eagle Pass, or to improve our public library. Invest in our youth and community. You are going to renegotiate with the Texas State Department of Public Safety. Public safety is many things, and one of them is recreational spaces. Two of our main recreational spaces, Shelby Park and the Eagle Pass Golf Course, are lined with boxcars and concertina wire. That does not benefit recreation. As a concerned community member, I ask you to direct the state to do the following. Remove concertina wire from all Shelby Park River Banks and the Eagle Pass Golf Course. Remove shipping containers from all Shelby Park River Banks and Eagle Pass Golf Course. Deny access to DPS from patrolling public parks with Humvees, and cease to deny the Eagle Pa, the public access to parts of the park. Eagle Pass deserves better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlos Longoria. Five thirty-eight PM.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Longoria. I am the, the president for the National Honor Society of C C One High School, and I stand here today to speak on behalf of our youth, and I'm honored to speak in front of you today. I stand here to urge you as you can, to consider the interests of the youth of our community as you enter negotiations with the Texas Department of Public Safety. The shipping containers and wire fencing on the edge of our river are hurting our youth. For example, in our sporting events, students in our high school golf teams, like I, I was a part of for the past three years, have lost their golf course. Over the course of the years, from my freshman year and out to my senior year, I have watched that, the fence being put up, first from being an open golf course that my friends and I used to play in, now first came the vans, then the wire fencing, then the shipping containers, and it's just, it hurts to see our community and our golf course be changed that way. And we're not the only ones. Also, the cross-country teams have had their tracks that they used to practice in disrupted, and students that can no longer go kayak, can no longer go kayaking and fishing with their families. But most of all, the shipping containers have instilled a sense of fear, hostility, and insecurity in our youth. Of the, as we have seen, our community vision should be transformed into something resembling more the front lines of, of a conflict zone. So as you enter negotiations, I urge you to take into mind the effect that these, that these containers and fencing have had on our students' recreational activities and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Five thirty, five forty PM. Hello, sir.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, city staff, and administration, and everyone present today. Listen, first of all, I want to start with a thank you. I want to thank you for rescinding the criminal trespass affidavit that was locking up immigrants there at Shelby Park, so I thank you for that. But it's obvious that Shelby Park is still a controlled park area, and I know that today you're going to go into negotiations, and you're going to consider options. And just like Ms. Karime says, all we're looking for as citizens is just the return of our park, the re restoration of the, of the river to its natural state, get rid of the concertina wire, get rid of those shipping cart containers. And I'm not just here to talk about the problems that are there, I'm here also to give you Solution that I can think of right off is that there's already a wall there, and it was built in two thousand and ten, and it has electronic gates, and it runs for almost one point eight miles. And I feel if somebody wants to stage and conduct security, we should use that wall. There was a, a big fight about that wall, and, and we just got to the point where we're not using that wall. DPS does not to be, does not need to be on the riverbanks. They do not need to be arresting people or pushing them back into the water. Listen, you're going to go into negotiations today, and, and I ask that you, that you don't let the status quo stay, make a change. We at the Eagle Pass Border Coalition have received hundreds of calls, not from the United States, but from other countries. People from around the world are watching Eagle Pass, and they want to know how you guys are going to handle this. I don't envy you. You've got a tough decision ahead of you. I hope, I hope that God gives you the strength and the courage to correct this wrong that's happened in our community, because there's a lot of people that want to come here and talk to you, and talk to our, the people in our community, and they want to find out how we are going to handle this particular problem that we're having at the river and with immigration. So I ask that you please, you know, as you negotiate, you consider those terms to get all those items through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Amrutha Jindal.
I apologize, that was submitted in error.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda items. We have two items on the agenda, the approval of the minutes and the resolution at this time. I'll ask council if you want to discuss any item individually, please let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve these two items.
I'll make a motion to approve these two items.
We have a, a motion by Councilman Diaz, second by Councilman Garcia, all in favor, unanimous. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance amending section thirteen dash forty-four A, fees for ambulance service of Article Three, Chapter Thirteen, Fire Prevention and Protection, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Mayor, council, good afternoon. As we have previously discussed, the existing ordinance regarding ambulance fees is basically set at whatever Medicare rate exists for the year. However, we do recognize that that does leave money on the table that private insurances are willing to pay. So the recommendation here in front of you, the copy of the ordinance, are those fees. We did consult with our billing company, who has several clients, and these are the market rates that are currently being charged. When we look at the, the customer base, you know, we break it into three categories. We have those that are, that utilize Medicare, those that have private insurance, and those that are self-pay. Medicare will pay what Medicare pays. Private insurance is what, you know, we're really focusing on. For those that have self-pay, we do have a charity care policy. So anybody that's within four hundred percent of poverty, the poverty level, does qualify for reductions in fees. So in reality, the only source that we're really tackling is private insurance. So what we're looking at is probably, I think it's about two hundred thousand dollars in additional potential revenue with these fees.
So we, we did get this document provided to us. You need, at this time, I'll ask council, do you want to make a motion to recommend these fees?
I want to make a motion to approve.
We have Councilman Garcia with a motion, second by Councilwoman Cruz. Discussion, all in favor, it is unanimous. Item four, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance amending the creating of a assignment pay by ordinance number twenty fifteen dash twenty-eight for certain assignments for civil service employees within the police and fire departments, and certificate pay for certain employees in the fire department holding certain certifications, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Campos.
Good evening, Mayor. So what civil service allows for is called assignment pay and certificate pay. We've had this since the beginning of civil service here in Eagle Pass. We currently have our motorcycle, police officers, our canine officers, and our senior officers assigned a pay. We're increasing that pay by ten percent. It was two sixteen up to two thirty-eight a month. We'd also like to extend the assignment pay to the Fire Marshal's Office and EMS Compliance Office, which would be at the same rate, the two thirty-eight monthly assignment pay. It's also increased on the certification pay side for intermediate and our paramedics. They've been receiving certification pay, we would also be increasing it by ten percent. The last time we had an increase was in twenty nineteen. So we're, we'd like to increase it to the range of three twenty-four through to four fifty-one for intermediates and paramedics, it'd be six twenty-three to eight forty-five. They have a step system as well, so the longer they are certified and experienced, the, the steps pay increases with them. One other difference here is that what we would like to add is when it certification pay was created, it, it was not given to the rest of the fire department, as far as the fire chief, assistant chief, the fire marshal's office, and EMS compliance. And the idea there is because they don't use it as frequent, their certification as frequently because they're not on the line. But they do keep up with those certifications, and they do occasionally use them. So what we came up with, what we thought was fair would be to give them the certification pay, but at half that rate, as that they would be on the line. So for the intermediate, it'd be one sixty-two through two twenty-five, and paramedic, three forty-two through four seventy-seven.
And these numbers are, are what, bi-weekly?
Monthly, monthly, sorry, yes.
Okay.
Just for clarification on the paramedic certification, can you give me the range again? Because on the, what we have for council communication, the numbers were a little bit off. Did you have the six eighty-five to the nine fifty-three is what you had, or did you state something different?
Did I say some, I'm sorry, I might, I might have stated, I might have stated the previous, that we're, we're increasing it.
Oh, because everything else was aligned, you know, one was sorry.
Six eighty-five through nine fifty-three, so that's with the ten percent increase.
Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure.
I might have stated.
That was the only one that was off, and I just want to make sure we're getting it the same.
I think we stated the, the previous one.
Not a problem, okay.
And the last raise, you said it was twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen.
It's been a long time coming.
So it's been a few years, yes, so that's, that's why the ten percent.
Okay. How much will this cost the, the city approximately?
It's ten percent. So the total that we pay right now is roughly about four hundred thousand dollars, so it's ten percent, about forty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
So at this time.
I'll make a mo, a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, a second by Councilwoman Cruz. Discussion, all in favor?
Well, I want to test.
Discussion, yes, sir.
Are we missing any PD or anybody out of this? For example, any, anybody else that has to maintain the certification that we might not be including, that we are like the fire department?
So that has come up with the police department, so we are going to be discussing that. Police department's going to be looking into what other departments might be paying as far as like a monthly rate. It would look different, just because the certification pay here is based on different job duties that the fire department has. When they're a higher certification like a paramedic, they're required to do more just as part of their job. So that's where that came, came from. But yes, we are looking into that as far as, I know they have different, I guess, certifications, license, under their licenses.
Chief.
Begins with basic, is it advanced, masters, and intermediate.
Just want to make sure everybody is covered.
Yes, sir.
We had spoken about the fire department and this before, so just want to make sure the PD's covered.
We have had some, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We've been having those discussions with the City Manager's Office in reference to certificate pay for police officers also. They have basic, intermediate, advanced, and masters. And we feel strongly that, that we should consider the, those certificate pays, and we're negotiating right now with the City Manager's Office. So they're, they're not discarding us on that, but we're in negotiations also.
Okay, we can always bring it back right.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, too.
Again, it's just different because those certifications on fire department actually changes the duties of the job of the fireman. On this one, it's basically different types of licenses that we would, do want them to increase. There's basic, intermediate, and master license on PD, which not necessarily is going to change the job duties, but it's going to be, it's going to show that we have better prepared and trained officers. So it's a different type of format, we're working on creating a pay scale for that.
Yes, if we can.
More of an incentive type.
Yes, and they do deserve an incentive if they're.
That's more like an education, right, it would be under the certification, but it's more like the educational incentive.
Right. Any further questions? At this time, I'll ask for a vote, all in favor, unanimous. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance by the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, confirming the civil service classifications within the police and fire departments, respectively establishing the number of authorized positions within each classification, establishing a uniform base pay and seniority pay, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
So this item goes hand in hand with the budget being proposed. What it does is it's basically listing out the ranks and the number of positions in there, except this won't divide it by the funding. It's just meant to be a little more transparent. So we wanted to bring it before you mainly because there were some change, main, some important changes under the police department specifically, they had just recently with the amendment added the, or changed to the captain, and with this next budget, they will be adding now the lieutenant rank. So that's, that's kind of, that's really mainly the difference there, and I believe we have six more firefighters added under the fire department. And that, this should be the same, that's under the budget as well, it's just, it's just a way to be more transparent on the classifications.
Formalizing everything.
And ranks, along with their base pay grades.
Okay, with that said, I'll entertain a motion on this item. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Cruz. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Item six, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance regarding the City of Eagle Pass, Texas municipal retirement system benefits. One, providing for increase to the employee contribution rate. Two, adopting non-retroactive repeating colas for retirees and their beneficiaries under TMRS Act, Section eight five three point four zero four F and F dash one. Three, authorizing annually accruing updated service credits and transfer updated service credits. And four, authorizing actuary determined by city contribution rate payments, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
This was an item we previously discussed with finance, I know it's brought up here. One of the benefits that we would like, that we were trying to provide an increase for the employees was to increase their deposit rate for the, their contribution rate for the TMRS, which is right now five percent, we'd be increasing it to six percent. This, of course, brings up the city's contribution up as well from ten to twelve percent. It's not changing any other items, the TMRS system as it is will still work the same. It's just we needed to bring this up to amend, amend certain items to be able to adopt that, the retroactive.
Okay, so with this, they'll be able to contribute more?
Yes, so it'd be up to increasing it by the one percent for the employees, and they would be, of course, receiving more from the city. Since we are one and two system, we'd be matching at six, at twelve percent.
Mayor, just to point out that this increase in one percent, it, it costs a cost for the city of five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So each, each percent, it is, it is something. So we wanted to take it eventually to, to seven and fourteen, but again, it's, it's gradual. Right now, we can only do one, one percent.
This, we discussed before, right, when I was asking for the retirement, that it was, this was the best we could do.
Yes.
Yes, because TMRS offers a five, six, and a seven, and we've had it at five. So this is just a step to go.
It's a, it's a good step.
It's a good step, yes.
All right, with that said, I'll entertain a motion on this item. We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Cruz.
I'll second.
A second by Councilwoman Diaz. Discussion, all in favor, it is unanimous. Thank you. Item seven, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance levying a tax rate for the City of Eagle Pass for the tax year twenty twenty-three, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Hello? Good afternoon.
This is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the tax rate, and the proposed tax rate for twenty twenty-three is point four ninety-nine, one sixty, with an MNO of point two seventy-five, three ninety-five, and INS point two eighteen, seven sixty-five. This tax rate is point zero zero five less than last year's tax rate.
It's point four nine four, right?
The, point four nine four?
Uh huh. Okay.
Four nine four, one sixty.
Point four nine four.
One sixty.
One six, okay. That is the, the tax rate for, for this year.
Yes.
Okay, and you need a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify, it was lower than.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we always want to clarify that to the public. So with that said, we do have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Cruz, second by Councilwoman Garcia. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous.
Just want to announce the public hearing.
Please.
The public hearing will be on September fifth, twenty twenty-three, and the meeting to vote on the tax rate is scheduled on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, City Council Chambers at City Hall one hundred South Monroe, at five thirty PM.
Okay, and do we have these dates published somewhere also? Maybe in the.
They're not published in the newspaper.
On our website?
In the newspaper.
In the newspaper, okay. Thank you.
We stated again, just the, the amount of decrease, just for the record, until they, until they. What was the amount of the decrease?
Yeah, it's point zero zero five.
Okay, thank you for the information, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance approving and adopting the budget of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year, and establishing procedures of formal approval by September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Do we have a balance budget?
Yes, sir.
There we go.
I apologize, I know they're working on getting this started up, so I hope it'll work. Or if you'd like, maybe we could move on, I'm not, it's barely starting up.
That's fine.
We could come back to this.
You want to come back to it?
Yeah, I'm not sure how long it's going to take.
Technical issues, okay.
Yes.
Let's go to nine. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass authorizing the use of competitive sealed proposals for golf course maintenance.
Yes, Mayor, council, this is a resolution authorizing the city to publish for competitive sealed proposals. This is not authorizing us to enter into any kind of agreement, just to collect the information through the bidding process, come back to council with different options, and then council can decide to take action if they would like at that time.
And again, is it just for maintenance? We are not talking about having a, a management company, correct?
Correct, just the maintenance, maintenance of the course itself.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm assuming we have a motion by Councilwoman Cruz.
I'll second that.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Cruz, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Discussion.
Does it have a comment?
No. Comments? All in favor, unanimous. Ten, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, appointing a member to the International Bridge System Board of Trustees.
Yes, Mayor, so we have a member that needs to be replaced, and it pertains to Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Do you have an appointment?
I do. I'm going to appoint Jesse Sandoval. We're not letting him go.
Okay.
That's right.
We, we.
I was like, I know.
We have a, an appointment made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
With, with everything that went on in the bridge, I think we need someone with that sort of experience.
So that, that's your motion to appointment?
That is my motion.
We have that motion, and we have a second by Councilwoman Cruz. All in favor, unanimous.
Thank you so much.
That's a good appointment, right there.
Thank you to Mr. Sandoval.
We can put you in all.
And Ms. Sandoval, for allowing him to say yes.
Yes. Eleven, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, casting the city's vote for members of the Maverick County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Billy Davis to the Maverick County Appraisal District Board.
We have a, a motion by Councilman Diaz to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Davis to the Appraisal District Board of Directors. We have a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Mr. Davis, I know you're going to represent us well in that board.
I'll do my best.
Yes, sir, thank you. Number twelve, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, accepting a petition for a public hearing on the creation of the Eagle Pass Public Improvement District Number One pursuant to Chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code and authorizing the mailing and publication of notice of the public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, council, so we did receive a petition to establish a public improvement district. However, there are some items that we do need to discuss with council after discussions with our bond council, so we do recommend going into executive session.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to take twelve into executive session.
So.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, a second by Councilman Garcia, all in favor, unanimous, we'll take twelve into executive session. To, for discussions with, with our legal counsel pursuant to Section five five one point oh seven one, Texas Government Code. There we go. Are we ready?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
You can do that.
So we're mo, going back to item number eight.
All right, Mayor, council, so we're a month away from the proposed adoption of our annual budget. The proposed budget has been filed, it is posted on the city's website, so this starts a legal clock. We were required to have this for public inspection for thirty days before we take action. So it is available online, or if anybody who's wishing to see a hard copy, they can come by City Hall. So the planned adoption date is on September twelfth. From this point forward, any change to the proposed budget has to be done by the City Council through an actual motion. There, the copy has been provided, it was provided electronically, but there's a hard copy for you. We will have a public hearing on September fifth as required by law. So this is the summary sheet that we use to illustrate all of the city's funds. The entire budget is fifty-seven million dollars. Go to the screen. Sorry about that, this is not the right file. Sorry about that, this is not the right file. This is not the right file, I apologize, let me get the hard copy of the presentation. So, do you have a copy of the presentation?
We can follow up.
So the, this is intended to be really a summary of where we are at this point. Um, so within the actual summary sheet, you do see that top item where, uh, under the general fund that it is a balanced budget, that's the goal all along, because that's the only fund that's required to to be balanced.
Right.
Uh, going on to the next slide, we do have just some of the focus items, so it is a fifty-seven million dollar annual budget. Uh, so the the big goals here is operational, uh, we did address some additional staffing needs, and we had to deal with a lot of increased costs associated with inflation. Uh, we are also he- investing heavily in employee benefits, as we discussed with the previous ordinances. Uh, so, uh, so we had the increase in the retirement plan, uh, providing a city-paid vision insurance to employees, to full-time employees, and increasing the life insurance uh benefit that we have for employees. We also have a very, very, very major investment in equipment, uh, five point five million dollars in equipment. Uh, going on to the next slide on revenue. We really wanted to highlight the two main revenue sources that really show the city's strength, uh, the bridge revenue and sales tax. Uh, so on the charts there, you can see that we, other than the COVID period, we saw a pretty significant increase in the revenues year after year. Uh, for personnel, we do have several new positions that are added into the budget. So we have the three additional police lieutenants, one animal control officer, one code enforcement officer, six firefighter E and Ts, two laborers uh in street cleaning, one administrative clerk in the in the Economic Development Department. That one, I just need to highlight that it's uh intended to be for the risk-in building once that's complete. So it won't be filled until that project is complete. Uh, human resource, additions, human resource specialist uh in Parks and Recreation, an additional facilities maintenance technician, and a golf course supervisor, that position's listed as a new position, it actually already existed, but it was under contract.
Right.
So now we have to bring it in under the city itself, and under legal services, so that's uh intended to be a a full-time employee, along with a the administrative assistant.
Right.
On the next slide, uh, we have the proposed upgrades. So we have an administrative clerk to an administrative assistant one, in marketing, same thing, administrative clerk to administrative assistant one. Those just have to do with the type of duties that that they're dealing with, especially as the city grows. Uh, municipal court, a collection officer one, two, a collection officer two, so the individual in that position has met the qualifications, sorry, you see, the certifications, so now eligible for that upgrade. Uh, within the I C T, as we uh start seeing more use, there's a need for a more supervisory-type position for the custodians, just to make sure that we're adequately providing the the service to uh to the I C T. Uh, in Parks and Recreation, there is, uh, actually, I want to have Parks explain this change. It has to do with the expansion of the the programs themselves, with the community.
Good, because I have a question.
The programs.
What is this?
Yep. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Council, um, so to go into a little detail, uh, what we've tried to do these past couple of years, we've tried to analyze how we can make a department more better, more efficient, more anything else, right? Um, so as we sat down, we analyzed the positions themselves, we recognized there was a lot of cross duties. Uh, we had, I believe, we had a four recreation specialists with the same job duties. So basically, they were going from sports to doing community programs, doing summer camps, doing five K's parades, there's a lot of cross there, right? Uh, it's really hard to find somebody that can put all their time and attention into these programs and not have them thrive, right? So what we did, we created a plan internally to separate now the recreation department to a couple of divisions, right? So we said first, our our recreational leagues very important, right? Very important, but we chose something that should definitely expand on. Um, so this past year, we expanded into creating summer leagues for the first time, we didn't have summer leagues. Uh, we started doing these past year, it worked out really well, but then we also said, hey, we don't have anything for adults. Seventy percent of our population, it will pass, are adults eighteen and over. We do not have any recreational leagues or programming for adults. So we said, the best way to accommodate that is to create an athletics division within the recreation department that's going to cater specifically to recreational leagues, camps, and services. However, that still leaves all our community programming, our summer camps, our five K's, parades, um, cheer and dance competitions, everything that's non-traditional. And as we also did a program inventory list with our department, we found out that we really lack in community programming as well. Um, when we did our our feasibility study for the Quakes and Recreation Center, we had a lot of public input in the in the survey who said that we needed teen activity number one, and also that we need a lot of, they they wanted to see more community and family programming. So that community programs coordinator is specifically just for that, to oversee all the operations when it comes to our community programming. Um, that way, we can move our staff, our our flight staff, to focus just on recreational leagues and expanding those services and giving the attention that they deserve. Um, at the same time, we added a sports complex. Uh, so we did have a recreational sports coordinator last year dedicated to the sports complex, but also to recreational programming. Those two duties were too much for one person, so we decided to split that up, uh, as we seen the complex is only growing, we're adding more leagues. Uh, so we we create three divisions within the recreation department, athletics, community programming, and sports complex. Uh, that way, we could have the attention to each specific division and actually give every program and service the opportunity to grow, and have somebody specifically just to put attention to that. Uh, when we have all the crossing paths, it just, in our opinion, doesn't lead to efficient work. And the number one thing we wanted to see is that, we want to see our programs thrive, but they need the attention of the staff in order to do so. Uh, but that what, that what, that's what that one's about.
I mean, that's one of the departments that's growing, like you said, there's so many people taking advantage of the sports complex, all the leagues, a lot of kids participating, so it makes sense to me, and I'm sure council, to add these positions.
So, I'll also clarify that, so we're not adding positions.
Okay.
That's that's the thing, so we're taking what we already have and reclassifying it, so in a way, we're actually doing more with what with just what we have.
Okay.
We're not, we're reclassifying, basically, so the jobs won't conflict and cross, we're just taking what we have currently and making the best out of it, and s- employing specifically in specific divisions. So we're we're actually, we work really hard on that to find a way how not to ask for more staff, to take what we have and do more with it. And I think really that's what we're doing with that.
Perfect. Thank you. Even better, right?
Definitely.
And that's how you balance the budget.
And so the the last changes that we have are some part-timers that we currently have and just upgrading them to full-time. So there is an administrative clerk uh in Parks and Recreation, and then our museum coordinator. With the, uh, the thought is to really expand the use of the the museum. Now, going to the point on balancing the budget, the last time we talked, we were about a million dollars short. In in reality, uh, I wanted to highlight the revenues when we were discussing that, because our approach when we're looking at revenues is to be very conservative. You know, we know that our two major revenue sources, sales tax and international bridge, are volatile in some senses, because you see those dips. You know, there's sometimes things happen that are just not predictable, and so whenever we budget, we really, really don't want to overestimate. And so for the upcoming year, when we started the workshop process, we had our estimates, but they kept on being beat month after month. So we were able to increase those estimates for the upcoming year. Uh, and then additionally, we, of course, the departments, I cannot thank them enough for for working with us, uh, making certain cuts, moving things to maybe next year to to balance the budget.
As you mentioned, the the part-time in the mar- under marketing, the museum coordinator, I mean, it would be nice if they could develop some kind of a an educational program that ties to that with the museum, I think that would be something that we need to look into.
Um, some other notes that we wanted to make that are in the budget, it ha- one of them has to do with the planning department. So, uh, departments are created by ordinance, and the ordinance, the actual existing ordinance, calls the department the Community Development Department. So we want to make sure that we match the that mean, and the planning department feels that that's more of an adequate description, because it's not just planning, it's a lot more community development.
They saw that change here, and then maybe do a double take.
Yeah, so it's a bit, it's a bit more clear classification, right? Sometimes, say the word planning department, some people may not know what it actually entails, you know, we know it's a very complicated and necessary process, but it's not necessarily clear with with the name. Um, so like I mentioned, we have, you just received it as the proposed budget, it's over a hundred pages here, and then over two hundred and fifty pages on the detailed version. So it's a lot of information, uh, I want to give you some time to to review that, ask any questions, and we really do thank you for the input that we've received so far, uh, in putting this together, but you know, we're, we're still a ways away, changes can still be made to meet whatever expectations that you may have, and we'll, we'll make our way through this process.
I know, it's always a tedious, long process, so like, we appreciate you, Jesse, and all the departments for coming together to make it happen. With that said, we do have a hard copy now, so if we have any changes, we can bring them uh and discuss them in the next meeting. This is a, this would be the first reading?
Yes, sir. Well, even before the meeting, if you all want to have individual meetings with Mr. Jesse and me, myself, just ask.
Absolutely.
Or how many to your schedule?
I just wanted, before we conclude, I do want to make one important point, and just, and council's, you know, very aware of this, but it has to do with the positions listed and the salaries listed within the budget. Like, for for the public knowledge, what's there is for budgetary purposes. Like, we have situation, let's say a new position is created, yeah, this year, well, we don't budget for it at a hundred percent, because we know it's going to take a while to fill that position, and even if it were filled October first, that position wouldn't get health insurance right away. They have to go through the probation period. So the the salaries that are listed there are based on budget. What the person actually gets paid depends on the pay plan, right? Every job has a pay grade, so let's say a person with experience, with a lot of experience comes in, well, they're asked for the pay plan, they'll be compensated for that additional experience. So it's really two different things that we're looking at. We're we're creating positions, we're setting aside a budget, but ultimately, the pay plan that council has approved determines what those salaries are. In general, the figures here are pretty accurate, but it's not in every situation.
Correct.
Yes.
Duty noted.
Yes.
With that said, after this uh presentation, if you don't have any questions, council, or entertain a motion to approve. Unless you all have questions.
Are we always scared of budget? I'm always reading over and over again, and there's always questions, so that's why it's so hard to approve, but we can always amend, and we can always ask, so this is the first reading.
That's a great point, it's not a concrete document, it's a very fluid document, as needs change, budgets can change.
Okay, so, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Cruz.
I'll second that.
A second by Mayor Potem Davis, discussion, all in favor, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we did nine through twelve, we'll go to thirteen, discussion and possible action on proceeding with certain Main Street master plan projects. Is it Sanada or Arturo?
Arturo.
Mr. Marquez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
The downtown's really taking shape, huh?
It is.
A lot of, good projects.
Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council, uh, let me just wait for the presentation, and open up. Uh, you'll see a lot of pictures here, I like to sneak over pictures, it's a little bit easier. Uh, we'll get down to the numbers in a little bit, but essentially, uh, this, this topic is in reference to the pre-announcement from yesterday about the fifty-seven South Music Festival. Um, with this event coming up to the community, we have to make sure that we put our best foot forward to the people that are going to be visiting, um, the city. So within that, uh, we want to have internal conversations about what it is that we can do as a community to make sure that the community really shines when we have tourists and visitors here. So what we've done is, we've identified five different projects downtown that would have the biggest impact, what we believe will have the biggest impact, to really make sure that downtown just looks presentable, uh, that it gives hope that things are happening to to the downtown area, and really just makes and represents Eagle Pass. So within these five projects, I'm going to go through them real quick, the first one is the Central Park Concept. Now, the Central Park Concept is a concept that was already presented in the Downtown Master Plan. Uh, essentially, what it is, it's the exchange of land for the I B C parking lot for a portion of Madison Street that the city owns. Now, what this would do is, it would create a green space or a central plaza for downtown, and for people to utilize for concerts, events, um, you know, maybe market days, and anything of the like to bring people downtown. Uh, please feel free to stop me and ask me any questions on this, I'll go through these pretty quickly.
A walking area, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, so walking area, um, in fact, one of the things that we have, uh, at least thought of is to have a stage there, to be able to have performances, you know, musicians, you know, play live music during our events, and a water feature. So there's a couple of elements that are in there that we we want to pursue to, again, really showcase the community, really showcase downtown.
So you're wanting to move some of the stuff that we had talked about at the, that on the big property on Ceylon Street, to move some of it over here now, or?
Yes, uh, I know.
Because we have had like a bigger area to work with to do a lot of that, that's why I'm asking.
We had discussions on having like a food truck park on the Ceylon, this one is mainly, uh, it's not necessarily going to have those food trucks, we're just having a stage in case it's needed for for some of those events. As you know, we do host like the Christmas on Main, we host the uh, the Xmas of Summer, so instead of having the 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 stage moving around and uh, doing all of that work, we want to have a already a a stage that's that's there for those types of events.
You should be staring exactly that corner, so. But yeah, if a truck steals in Ceylon, please.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, it's fine, uh, the next one, as you guys may have noticed, the construction going down on Riskens. Uh, unfortunately, the the lights that were on Riskens itself were a little bit too low, so we had a a truck pass by, and unfortunately, you know, it was too high, and tore down some of the lights, uh, so we had to take him down for for safety reasons. However, this gives us an opportunity to go back and put them not only on the same section that it had before, but rather expand that area. A lot of people, and you know, we see this every day, every night, really, that people go there, take pictures, you know, they use it as a as a reason to visit downtown, especially at night, and we want to make sure that we keep that on. So the Light Up Downtown is a project that, um, happened in twenty fifteen, where there were new light posts added, and what we want to do is, we want to add empty light posts, so that we can use them and put a wire through them and run the same stream lights, not only on three hundred block, but also on the four hundred block. Now, the Riverwalk, this one is definitely, you know, uh, it hits a lot of hearts to to a lot of Eagle Passians, um, as it is, or was the first Riverwalk before San Antonio. Um, so this one, uh, we'll go into a little bit more detail, and I'll ask, uh, Ricky, if he can answer some questions if you guys have any. But essentially, what we want to do is, we want to make sure that we activate the Riverwalk again, meaning that there's water flowing, that people can, you know, stop by and and utilize it as a as a park and really enjoy it, uh, really have some, a feature in in the downtown area to go and visit. Uh, the Ford Dunkin' Enhancement, uh, this one, really what it pertains to is just making sure that it's a walkable, uh, living space where people or families can go and, you know, enjoy a a Saturday afternoon and, you know, play sports, utilize the outdoor area, and truly enjoy what Eagle Pass has to offer. Again, I'm, I'll defer to Ricky for any specific questions on this, though. Uh, last but not least, is the parking meter system. Is the parking meter system. Uh, now, we've had a a few questions about the parking meter system, there's a couple of vendors downtown that want to be able to utilize some of the spaces that are currently being used as either loading zones or no parking meters at all, which does not allow them to circulate their traffic, meaning that, uh, you know, you'll have somebody parked there, and they'll stay there for hours where they want to be able to use that space so that they can get another client and get another, um, customer through their doors. So one of the things that parking meters assist with is making sure that our traffic is constantly flowing. Um, so these are the five projects, again, these are very broad-based, um, as to what it is that we want to accomplish before the uh, the April eighth deadline of next year. So we want to give you guys some estimates of of what each one of these projects costs, and again, get your input on, uh, whether or not you guys want to pursue this. Now, the Central Park, the concept is, goes anywhere from a million to a million point five. Now, that's through design and construction. Again, that Again, that includes the water feature, the stage, uh, the lights, the, um, the pathways for, for walking, the green area, and everything that you can think of, uh, with the exchange of land between IBC and the city. Light Up Downtown is anywhere from sixty to seventy thousand. That includes the purchase of the poles, that includes the purchase of the string lights, and that includes the installation cost of, uh, putting these, um, these, these poles and lights, uh, in the downtown area.
And the plan for those lights, you said, you said it by block number, but that would be where they, they were?
Yeah, so ultimately what it is, is that the brown poles that already, that were installed back in twenty fifteen, what they'll do is it'll be, it'll have an opposing pole right across the street and use those to, to run that wire to be able to connect them all and have the, the, the lights connecting one another.
Gotcha.
Now, the Riverwalk, uh, this one is only for the water pump. Uh, we've only gotten the, the estimate on this one for the water pump. We still have to consider other things like filling up, uh, making sure that we go in there and clean up whatever needs to be cleaned up, uh, looking at the concrete work, if it needs, uh, additional support, and anything within the vicinity that also needs to be, um.
I went out there not that long ago. I know there's like a, a rail, a walking rail that's not in very good condition. It could be a hazard, so we need to look into that.
Most definitely.
But that would be amazing to, to have that up and running. It's such a gem in the community that we should take advantage that it's there.
Yeah, so the fifty-seven thousand that's listed here, again, is for that pump. Uh, the pump, what it does is it circulates the water. Um, I'm not sure if you guys have seen it, but there's a, kinda like a waterfall looking, um, item by the, by the Riverwalk. And essentially, this pump would be to circulate that water back and forth. Uh, the enhancement, again, the walking trails, the improvements of, of the, of the green space area, um, you know, some added features. I don't know if, uh, Ricky, if you wanna add some, some details as to what this would entail.
And the location of this is the Hubble's Park?
Yes, uh, for the Riverwalk?
For the Riverwalk.
Yes, the Riverwalk.
What I would like to see, I mean, this is me, uh, is a more comprehensive number for the Riverwalk area, other than just the pump? To see what it would be to bring it up to what we would actually like to showcase before we would commit to the Fort Duncan Enhancement. But I would also like to know exactly what the, what Fort Duncan Enhancement entails, not just a number.
Sure.
So regarding the Fort Duncan, um, if you've been out there, um, we did have a, a preliminary meeting, excuse me, preliminary meeting with the landscape market check out. So one of the things we really identified was the outdated amenities, basically. You know, outdated park benches, playscapes, um, cooking tables, and just a lot of infrastructure, right? Need of pervocation upgrades, lack of lighting, um, ballards that are really, you know, outdated. So, and also trails that lead to nowhere, there's no connectivity between the areas. So it's basically just an enhancement for sure of landscaping, irrigation, uh, lighting, incorporate some lighting in the area, um, incorporating a lot of, uh, modern amenities, um, possibly recreating some playgrounds, uh, and, uh, also we, uh, if you go, go out there, also, um, we try to cut, trying to connect what's called the, uh, Gisuppi Park with the Children's Library area with the Wardbury Park. Those are the three areas we're focusing on, trying to create some connectivity between those three areas and not so much going into the ball field area with just those three areas. Um, but basically, it is, in essence, just modern updates that are really, we feel really lacking to amplify the area. Um, that's basically what it is right now. You don't have any conceptions, but those are what we're.
That was my next question. Do you have any revisions that we're asking?
Yeah, we don't have any conception.
Yes, and so the, the, this item is really intended to just get council's guidance to move forward so that, you know, we're not approving any construction, but it's so that we start the design process, go through the bidding process. So council still has a lot of.
I think we've been working already with the contract with IBC. Uh, my understanding is that's almost finalized, so I would like to see that project. If we wanna get it done by April twenty twenty-four, we'd have to move on that, get on it, real quick.
Yeah, and you bring up a good point. Uh, if, if all these are gonna get, um, done and completed to, to be displayed by April, we, we do have a bit of a timeline.
Yeah, so.
That we have to keep to. Um, there's some projects like, for example, the, the parking meter system that, you know, can.
That's correct, so is the lining.
Yeah, exactly.
We can hold off on that one.
If, this, yeah, this is.
To do the rest.
The purpose of the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, ju- just until April, maybe hold off on that one, take care of the rest. That will make a bigger impact.
Absolutely.
And the money's coming from the general fund or it's, there's a grant?
So, well, we're gonna pursue some grant funding, so right now, one of the main, uh, sources is actually gonna be interest earned. So with the money that we've borrowed, we've been investing it, and for this, these projects, we'll probably have about one point two million dollars in just investment earnings that we could invest into these projects. Um, but there's other projects, there's other funding that we had for park improvements that have not been utilized, so we can tap into those. So ultimately, we, we still, this isn't a for sure, you know, this are projects that we're gonna tackle. We still need to come back with final numbers, like get council approval. So there's still some work to be done, but we just wanna, uh, get the approval to come up with the concepts and the good estimates.
You have that, I'm sure, that, that approval to come up.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I would like to see some of those conceptual or additions of what you would need, like at the Riverwalk area, as well as in the other.
And can you add the, the idea of the containers as kitchens and local, I mean, for food vendors?
Right, so, um, yeah, we can definitely approach the, the property owners to see if that's a feasible, um.
Sorry, the what?
The, uh, containers that, uh, you can convert into kitchenettes or, you know, little, so that way we have vendors, local vendors inserted events and maybe the city can lease them the space, but they, they can be ready for.
I don't know if there's enough space in the Central Park for that, but the other space.
The one on, on Quarry and Ceylon.
The one that I proposed was like on the edge of the river, it also serves as protection as well, so you can actually guide the people to a certain side of the river and then the other one for, for food vendors.
Yeah, we can definitely approach the, the, the property owner started next door and ask them.
Perfect.
So, um, so what, what I'm hearing is that everything except with the parking meter system would be something that you guys would like to pursue.
Oh, well, actually, I'd like to push for the parking meter.
Okay, I mean, I, I wasn't saying.
No, no, no. Uh, yeah, could you tell me a little bit more about the more?
We, we can get estimates on everything and then come back to council and you'll, or you can all decide what you wanna pursue because.
Because we talked about that before.
To a certain extent, the, the parking meters, we can invest a little bit of money in it, but they're gonna pay for themselves eventually and they're gonna make us money down the long run. So it's not just something that's gonna be there as a dead investment.
Exactly.
Like we can put the lights up and they all look pretty, but we'll have to maintain them. And then this will generate a little something to.
Because really, the, the parking meter system is outdated and it's too expensive to replace.
My train of thought was, was to be to focus on, on the other ones to get them done just by, by April. But I agree that we, we definitely need a new meter system.
That's a doable thing.
I mean, if we could do all of them by, by April, let's do it. But I'm sure it's not that easy, that's a.
Um, just kinda give you some, some thoughts on the parking meter system. The, the three hundred thousand dollar price point is an estimate for keeping what we already have but doing a mixture of kiosks and improving what, what we already have. If we are looking at a full, uh, revamp of the system, meaning that we go with all digital, all kiosk, then we're looking at the five hundred thousand dollar price point.
I think, if it's, I mean, I'd like to recommend a full revamp of everything, what fix what doesn't work, 'cause you've been fixing those for a while, I mean.
Well, um, there, there have been some, some, some fixes made, uh, most recently. In fact, now Commercial and Main Street are, uh, all the meter heads are up and running again.
I, I know because, and Chief isn't gonna let me lie about this, I was down there checking out what was working, what was not, and.
Yeah.
And it was a hot day, I'll tell you that much, but I was down there and I think a full revamp.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, the ones that are there.
I, I agree with that. I also have questions about what enforcement would look like. I know that we, uh, we, we did discuss having one code enforcement officer dedicated to downtown. Would that be a duty for code enforcement or would we need meter maids as an additional staff?
Chief, if you'd like to, yeah, we, we had a internal discussion, uh, with the chief on, on this and I'll let him, uh, give some.
Those have the option of credit cards, right?
Yes, yeah, the, e- even, even if we do a mixture, so, um, if you think about it, if you guys kinda imagine the, the parking meter heads that we have already, they're kind of a, a two-piece, uh, set. The, the coin, uh, portion can actually be removed and replaced with a, I guess, more modern one where you can accept credit cards while still keeping the, the bottom half. So you can do a, a bit of a mixture, um, with them. So you can do it like, I guess, modern improvements, uh, is the best way to say it.
And sort of just updating it.
Exactly, yeah.
Actually, mine's don't work, the ones in front of my office, very wild.
But they were just fixed.
No, the only Commercial and Main Street were the ones to have, have a big.
Of course, uh, we've been discussing the meters, there's about three hundred of them. And we wanna make sure that, uh, we're on the same page that, uh, Mr. Marquez is, where all of them would be operational and all of them could make money. Uh, going back to the question, sir, in reference to, uh, either parking meters, maids, or code enforcement, we're trying to figure that out and how it would work. That would be very comprehensive for the city as we continue to grow. Uh, parking meter maids have been brought up and put them in a little buggy and go around making sure that the, uh, parking meters are all current and nobody violating any of them. And there's also some updates in, in actual technology where actually if somebody leaves a parking meter and another one tries to park there because there's still time left, uh, well, the parking meter automatically will default and, uh, go back to zero. So there's been those ideas that we've been exploring and I can't give you an exact concrete answer.
So by, by when would we be able to expect a concrete answer? Because I, I think that, you know, when thinking about timing and if we are debating on which project to attack first, I think that, you know, putting in meters without a way to enforce them, i- i- it's, it's not gonna be beneficial for us.
Yeah.
So I, I would like a concrete answer to, to be able to determine timelines.
Sure, we can put together, that's what we're liking, we're, we're looking for the substation to start with, right? We wanna have our officers presence and we will have code enforcement do, do their job. And then at that point in time, we're hoping that maybe we'll go either parking meter maids or we'll go code enforcement first to be able to enforce it. And if the city continues to grow, then we'll add the parking meter maids. Not certain exactly how that's gonna work, but that would be the idea and the best answer that I can give you.
So can you give us an approximate date on when we could have a, a concrete answer?
No, sir, I can't do that.
I think it's gonna be based on what type of equipment we buy, so they're all different. So, uh, some of them are more automatic, like the enforcement can be done based on the equipment. Others do require man force, another requires some type of, of little cars driving around the area. So it really depends on what type of, of equipment we buy and then the enforcement is based, based on that.
Could you bring something back in a month, this is gonna give us a presentation.
September two, September two.
Yeah, we can come back with options.
That's sort of what he's asking.
Yeah, I agree.
One thing we have to consider is our out-of, out-of-country visitors. How would we get their tickets sent home?
Well, that, that, that's, that's, that was my train of thought to, let's do the park first and then after this event, boom, we focus on, on the parking meter situation.
And then just a consideration, maybe, uh, designate the spaces because then the parking sometimes it's not, I like, well, I mean, they don't use the space the way they should and, and there's a lot of, uh, waste of, yes.
We, we get complaints from some cities that the spaces are too small.
And I don't know if they can be numbered, I mean, just a train of thought, because maybe businesses can actually purchase per month or per week, I don't know, maybe. Because like, if, for instance, I, the office that I, it's just like three spaces or four. Maybe the same, uh, owners of that office space can actually designate their areas and pay a fee, a monthly fee to the city. I mean, that's something else that maybe could be considered.
We've been looking as to what vision we have of the city and downtown because either we, we let that happen and we're always gonna have someone parked there or we want rotation. We want more people, different people to go into downtown. So it's, it's different, so we're brainstorming on all of those details.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm actually really glad they brought up that, that comment because that is something that we've considered. Uh, we do have people that, that do live downtown and we wanna encourage more people to live downtown. So the idea of having an annual pass for, uh, you know, business owners, property owners and people that live downtown is something that we definitely consider.
Thank you.
So if we could bring more option, concrete options regarding that?
Yeah.
That way we're, we're not making all these ideas up in the council meeting.
Well, I'd like to answer that question for you as time comes in. Uh, we'll be able to put it a little bit more in a favorable area that we can actually put it together and say what we're gonna need, that we're gonna need meter maids, how many? That we're gonna need more code enforcement, how many? And especially the substation, that's more important to me right now, to be able to put patrol officers in there.
Okay.
Hope I answered your question.
And you should, you should don't use coins.
Okay, with, with that said, no.
What, what do you, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
Where are we in, aligned with, uh, the ownership of switching ownership on the, remember from Ceylon on Main Street down to where that, where we can make some of the change? Remember, we had identified some of the changes that we would like to do to Main Street in the downtown area?
To acquire the, the road, so we're still negotiating with Texas. They asked us to do an appraisal on the, on the street, uh, which came up about close to nine hundred thousand dollars. So we're still looking, but the way it looks, uh, we're gonna come back and present it to council because it does seem high. That's just we're acquiring the, the street.
Right.
Then it's also the maintenance of it.
Right.
And as we see it, we may not need the, the actual street because we may, it really depends on the Main Street plan. We may still leave it as it is, so it doesn't make sense for us to acquire, pray for it and then do the maintenance if we're gonna leave the same setup as it is. If we were thinking based on the master plan again, if we're gonna say, change parking, parking setups or bulb outs or something else, then we may consider buying it, but just as it is, it is expensive.
Right.
And the maintenance is also gonna be very expensive.
The reason I was asking is because if we're gonna be investing in the, well, it's just like you hit the nail on the head about the parking meters and if we're gonna redesign how people were going to park, I mean, we need to do it all at the same time. Let's not do it twice, that was my, that's why I asked for that.
Okay, exactly. Yeah, uh, we want to present these, these, uh, projects to you, but we want to do with a range of, at least a, a number to, to be able to, you know, kinda analyze what this would cost.
Okay.
Uh, but it's, yeah, we're looking for feedback from, from council and mayor to, to see if you'd like us to, uh, you know, move forward with any of these.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've sent the feedback, please, move forward, move forward with all of them, yes.
I do, I do have one quick question about the process for, um, the design of Central Park.
Yes.
Do you have ideas on how you would approach that or, or what, what do you have in mind?
That's, that's a, that's a really good question. So in the negotiations portion of, of, uh, the swap of land, um, IBC did request to be at least, you know, be part of the process in the design. Um, now, our concept is, of course, to create something that would attract people to the downtown area. Um, we've been, well, I'm, I'm glad to say that the last few events that we've had, uh, you know, the Selena concert, uh, the, uh, Christmas on Main and, and other previous ones in the past few years have been very successful. So we wanted to sign around that, we wanted to sign, um, so again, as mayor mentioned, that we have a stage where, you know, we don't block the street necessarily, but rather give, or enhance the opportunity to have live performances downtown. So, um, to answer your question, we do have a, a concept of what it is that we want to create, but at the same time, um, IBC, uh, would be involved in the, in the design of, of the park itself, since they will be right from the.
Whenever we get, whoever's gonna design this, you'll bring it to council so we can.
A hundred percent, yes.
Excellent.
So the action that we're requesting is just to authorize us to move forward with the conceptual, well, the design and getting cost estimates, bringing that back. But one other item that wasn't mentioned, uh, has to do with, um, conversations that the Bridge Department, the Finance Department has had with Tesla regarding superchargers. So they are interested in installing, uh, for anywhere between six and eight, that they're looking at leasing space from our parking lot.
Okay.
And so just authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute those agreements.
Okay, do, do we have a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll make that.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Davis and a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just something to keep in mind, I, I mean, this is me personally, but I mean, the park, so long as it doesn't lose like a, a downtown feel, I don't want it to look like, you know, out of place.
Fourteen, discussion on possible action on an agreement between the City of Eagle Pass Fire Department and the U.S. Border Patrol Del Rio Sector Emergency Medical Program.
Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, sir.
Uh, this agreement is the same agreement or a similar agreement that we've had for years with the U.S. Border Patrol. Uh, this agreement, uh, it's actually a memorandum of understanding. Uh, it'll assist to provide, uh, clinicals to the border patrolmen and, uh, the field and ambulance setting, uh, experience. Uh, in, in return, we also get training from the Border Patrol. Uh, they'll provide the, the medical, uh, liaison for the Eagle Pass Fire Department or with the Eagle Pass Fire Department from, provide, uh, continued education, training and credits. Uh, they'll also, uh, provide the mutual aid. Uh, we've had, uh, border patrolmen assist us in accidents or, or other incidents where the Border Patrol are trained as EMTs and work, uh, in unison with the Eagle Pass Fire Department. Uh, there will also be, uh, coordinating and, uh, establishing, uh, providers with the Border Patrol and. They will also be coordinating and establishing providers with the border patrol and EMS from the fire department. So basically, it's a win-win situation for both of us.
Okay, chief. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Diaz and a second by Mayor Protem Davis. Discussion, all in favor, it is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Fifteen, consideration and possible action on an interlocal agreement between the City of Eagle Pass and Maverick County for services and equipments.
This is an interlocal agreement with the Maverick County, so what this agreement does is that we're able to share equipment, manpower, materials, facilities, and collaboration with grant funding. We don't have an active interlocal agreement. We do act as if we do have an active interlocal agreement. We usually try to provide that assistance to county. County provides assistance to us as needed, but this has to be in place to make that official or formal. We're also gonna look into the one we have with the school district, because we need to have one active too. So this is basically that we're allowed to request services or facilities from them and the same from us.
And vice versa, okay. You always want to work together, so I'll entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Diaz and a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Sixteen, consideration and possible approval, change order number one for bridge administration building construction contract.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Hello.
On behalf of Mr. Valera and the bridge system, we would like to request a change order to acquire smart vaults that are needed for the bridge operations. We want to ensure these vaults are installed and ready to operate when we move to the new administration building. These vaults will dramatically improve the efficiency of the bridge operations. The proposed change order is for a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars that include two smart vaults, one for U.S. currency and one for Mexican currency. And just to clarify, this change order is on the bridge request, since it was not included in the building design, and we would like to ask mayor and council for the approval of this request.
Any questions from council?
Makes sense.
Those are the ones that we saw.
Yes, I'll entertain a motion then. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Davis and a second by Councilwoman Cruz. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you. Executive session, item seventeen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding the agreement between the City of Eagle Pass and United Medical Centers to allocate medical workforce program funds for medical incentives and possible action in open session regarding same. Eighteen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding possible litigation against Econo Lodge Inn and Suites located at nineteen-twenty-three North Veterans Boulevard regarding hotel occupancy taxes and possible action in open session regarding same. Nineteen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding negotiations with the Texas Department of Public Safety regarding DPS presence at Shelby Park and possible action in open session regarding same. We're also taking item twelve into executive session, and we will be entering executive session at six forty-seven P.M. We are coming back from executive session at seven thirty-seven P.M. We will start with item twelve, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the city council, the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, accepting a petition for a public hearing on the creation of the Eagle Pass Public Improvement District number one pursuant to chapter three-seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code and authorizing the mailing and publication of notice of the public hearing.
I make a motion to table this item for our next meeting that will take place in two weeks due to some questions regarding specific uses of the remaining land.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cruz.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Mayor Protem Davis. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. It'll be tabled for the next meeting in two weeks. Seventeen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding the agreement between the City of Eagle Pass and United Medical Centers to allocate medical workforce program funds for medical incentives and possible action in open session regarding same.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve the agreement by Councilwoman Cruz, a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Eighteen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding possible litigation against Econo Lodge Inn and Suites located at nineteen-twenty-three North Veterans Boulevard regarding hotel occupancy taxes and possible action in open session regarding same.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to provide something.
Please.
Administration and legal are recommending that you move forward with the initial notice letter to them of their past due amounts that are owed, and then any subsequent response then we bring to the council before initiating any sort of lawsuit, if it's necessary.
Thank you, counselor. Do we have a motion as to that recommendation?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Garcia and a second by Mayor Protem Davis. Discussion, all in favor, it is unanimous. Nineteen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding negotiations with the Texas Department of Public Safety regarding DPS presence at Shelby Park and possible action in open session regarding same.
Mayor, if I may, I make a motion for city manager and legal to continue negotiations as directed into executive session.
Okay, we have a set motion by Councilwoman Cruz.
Second that.
Second by Mayor Protem Davis. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We do, by Mayor Protem Davis and second by Councilman Garcia. All in favor, unanimous. We adjourn at seven forty P.M.